This is the Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners. This is a special budget hearing meeting, so if we could rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Inman?
Here.
Lathrop?
Yep.
Max Bauer?
Here.
Rennie?
Here.
Lemkul?
Yeah.
I show Thomas and Wheelack his excuse.
That's right. Okay, at this time, we'll go into public comment. Is there anybody from the public who would like to make comment? Everybody rushing to the podium all at once, okay? Then we'll go on into the agenda. So, this is a time for us to talk about the budgets. There are many papers on your desk that we have, that Mr. Benda, our administrator, has presented to us.
I've got a few things here. I would like to tell you what they are. One is the General Appropriations Resolution. It's a substitute. It includes language number on the, be it further resolved, number three at the top of the second page, includes the surcharge at $1.85, which was approved by the voters last Tuesday. That's the only change from the one that you had before. There's a piece of information that says, "Composition of the Authority Board" that was requested on mental health funding, and I've also just put on your desk a population and funding analysis of the information in this Composition of the Authority Board. And, as you'll notice, the, it says that in 2000, well, based on the 2000 census and the way that we pay for this, we had 41.87% of the population, but we are paying 66.44% of the funding for the organization. And the reason for that is, when I talked with Greg Pathouse a couple of years ago and he came in, it was because the benefits that we offered in Grand Traverse County, especially defined benefit levels at that time, were more than the others wanted to accept, and they didn't want to take on the accrued liability that that represented when they transferred the employees, and they all balked and said, "No, we're not going to fund it at that level." I don't know how they came up with 66%, but that was the rationale for why Grand Traverse County pays more.
And this is a perpetual funding?
Until we change it. Until we get a change with all six counties agreeing.
So, all six counties would have to come together in order to make that agreement change?
And I don't know where they are with the funding of that defined benefit. How many people are still in it? And how many are left to, whether they're fully funded or partially funded?
No, they're still underfunded, I think.
I think depending on how you measure it, it's three to five million dollars of it defined benefit.
Okay.
And that was inherited from the county.
Right.
Okay, that's what this, most of this is about.
That's why it's this way, right.
Okay, just so people understand that.
Yeah. Another thing I put on your desk was a 911 surcharge funding analysis. I know you might be interested in this, so I put it together. I've been, when we put the $1.85 number out there, we were pretty confident that it would pay for all of our capital and operating costs for the six-year period. Taking it from the top, the surcharge analysis that was approved, you'll see that a $1.85 times 90,910 phones equals 168,000 a month, which equals 2,018,002 a year. You add in state grants, and the total revenue is 2,283,202. Just for the year 2015, we'll be able to charge 80 cents up until the end of June, and then we can levy $1.85. The two numbers are there, and they're added together in the next section, under revenue, for the 2015 budget, $1,710. The operating expenditures are $1,937. It leaves us with a $227,000 deficit, but there are some assumptions behind this. We've got a 4% interest rate in the capital. If we, if we want to buy all that equipment up front, we can buy it up front at a 4% interest rate, and this is how much it costs. I've got it set up, I doubt that we'll be able to go out to the market and get a 4% interest rate. We would probably have to loan it from the delinquent tax revolving fund or some other place, and it could be less than 4%. But still, the 227 also includes our indirect costs, which are currently, basically, the general fund would eat that. If we were to send it to a new fund, which the General Appropriations Resolution says we're going to create a separate fund, and we're going to take all the revenue from 911 and put it in that separate fund, and pay all of our expenses out of that fund, we would have about 141,000 of that to appropriate. Plus, we don't know how 2014 is going to turn out, but she's had some horrendous turnover and attrition in that, in her accounts, so we might be able to come up with the money to offset this. Going forward, however, there's a surplus for every year, and if you change the number to a 3% interest rate, you even get more money. If the capital items below, these are the ones that she identified as $1,655, and 38,000 of that we're going to have to pay this year, that's the column to the right on the bottom, and that's the number I have in the debt service for a five-year or six-year payback. So what it says, basically, in the middle with the bold-faced numbers, is that we can cover all the 911 costs, including all the capital costs, and get them up front, and we'll probably have enough money to do it all. That's what this analysis shows. So, and we intended it to be that way. We want, we didn't want it to be excess money. We wanted it to be close to the bone. I think it's close. I think, you know, we can manipulate some dollars up and down. If, for example, the simulcast paging system doesn't come at 3/4 of a million dollars, it comes in at 650,000, we have another $100,000, you know, to play with. So, we won't know those until we actually go out, get the numbers from, you know, have Jamelle do the bids for all these different things, and then we'll have the numbers in hand and know exactly what the real capital cost would be. Plus, we've got some things that, you know, are in the other equipment and actually other capital. We may have to do some things to the road to get to the tower. That's, there's no money for that anywhere. We may have to use this money to do that. So, there are things that, you know, you just wouldn't even think of that are going to be needed in the future for 911.
Questions? Go ahead.
No, I want to make a motion.
No?
Okay. I make a motion to direct staff to prepare a budget which cuts a uniform percentage from the actual county contribution to each department. This budget should be balanced without borrowing or further depleting the fund balance.
I'll support.
I understand it. Larry?
Question?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, just to, some help with administration on the motion. The, so, we originally came up with a shortfall of a projected $1,700,000. Dean reported some time ago that we had not spent approximately a million of that or so. So, we're hopeful that, you know, that'll stay true through the end of the year. So, we're looking at a shortfall of something of 700,000 or in that range. So, if you exclude, like, grants that departments are getting and other sources of funding other than general fund money, which I think is excluding out of that motion, then they are, then they, then each department has a particular, a particular budget that is being funded by our appropriation, our tax appropriations. So, how would, given the motion, how would you approach, how, what would be the process that you would approach to try to accommodate that motion? I mean, because, would it be a percent? It would, because you have a, you have large departments, like the Sheriff's Department, that has a large budget, and you have other departments that have smaller budgets, and you have departments that are like at, you know, minimum staff levels with no fund balance and those kinds of things. So, how, I mean, how could, how do you, how would you approach, in terms of dean and administration, a motion of that nature so not one department just gets a big giant cut and everyone gets a little cut, and then we balance the budget? I mean, help me with that.
Well, the way the motion is stated, I don't have a lot of flexibility. I would have to cut every department. The treasurer has four employees. They're complaining that, you know, if somebody goes on vacation, another person gets sick, there's two employees to guard the vault, hang on, answer the telephones, and stand up at the front desk. We would have to tell them that the same percentage would apply to them. We would do it with every department, as a matter of fact, even those who are, that are mandated to run at a certain level. So, there's no flexibility in the motion. And I would have to say, the dollar amount that you want to cut, $1,785,000, divided by our total budget.
The 700 is what I'm saying.
Just the 700,000.
Yeah, just the 700.
Okay. Well, I'd have to take the $700,000 and divide it by the dollars in the budget now, and use that percentage. It would mean that, you know, everyone has to be cut equally. I think what I heard was equally, by the same percentage. So, I would cut by the same percentage. Now, you're going to have a parade of people telling you that, "You can't cut my department like that," but I wasn't given the flexibility to do that.
Chris?
I would agree that this is not probably, in my opinion, the best way to, to go about it, but at least it starts the discussion. And I would like to know, for instance, where we are on our contracting, outsourcing, mowing, for instance. I would like to, I would like to see a breakdown. We pay $268,000 a year to MSU Extension. I would like to see a breakdown as to how much is going for the educators that teach nutrition programs. You know, I will tell you that most people have access to the public library. It has book upon book about nutrition, and, you know, I absolutely would fund the sheriff's department, a sheriff's deputy, before I would fund a nutritionist, but I'm not getting the information I need, and I don't know how to express my frustration any more than supporting this motion. I think we can, we can make some cuts in this budget, but I've got to have the information to do it, and I don't have it.
Dan?
The reason I'm doing this motion is that I'd like to set parameters on this discussion. I'm open to a friendly amendment about the uniform percentage, but what I do want to see is that this board agree, we're not going to borrow money, and we're not going to deplete our, our fund balance anymore, and that whatever budget we come up with, though, at least those two parameters are strongly enthroned in this budget. I'd be willing to take a friendly amendment, if you want to do something with the uniform percentage thing, but what's really important to me is that we don't borrow money, and we don't spend more than we make, and we don't use our fund balance.
Can you just make that as a motion? Just those three points? Would you? A new motion?
Well, just tell me what to do, although I don't understand.
Just amend, amend your motion to just those three points.
Well, actually, you should just withdraw it, start over. I think that'd be the simplest.
All right? Okay, I withdraw my motion.
I'll withdraw support.
All right. So, now, can I make another one? Sure. Okay. I make a motion that whatever budget we come up with, in terms of, and whatever cuts we make, that these parameters are involved, that we do not borrow any money, we do not spend more than we make, and we do not deplete our existing fund balance.
I'll support.
Okay.
Motion to support. Other discussion. Mr. Rennie?
First of all, the uniform across the board cut is not good for the county. It's not good for the employee.
I just withdrew it. I understand that.
That's why we're talking about this.
Okay.
Sorry. We have to look at these individually. We do not have to go into this with a deficit. There's many things we could look at that we could make cuts now. I agree with Dan on that. We should not go forward with any kind of a deficit spending plan. As far as the fund balance goes, I think the fund balance is money that's been collected from the taxpayer and it's sitting there. If you have a need for it, there is no reason not to use that, and I would use that fund balance before I would start increasing taxes. Now, we did a 9/11 surcharge thing. Is that a tax increase, or is this going to be a switch? It looks to me like the way we're talking about it, it's going to be a tax increase, is the way it turns out. In my opinion, we should be lowering this budget by that amount that comes out of that surcharge to give the public a break on this and still go after the deficit we have, not try to patch it or hide it in. The biggest area I see where we could do something is staffing plan. It's time for this board to get up and do something now. Doesn't have to be draconian, but it should be enough to show the people that we're going to start looking at the situation we have down there. We have a whole lot of stuff this next board going forward to decide and stuff on wage analysis, position analysis, all that kind of stuff. That's all got to happen. But we have a group of, in our staffing plan, that we never hire, and this money is pushed around each year to push this or that rather than use a fund balance or take, take care at watching what we spend. And I think if this board has any moxie, it's time to look at some cuts reasonable now.
Larry?
I'm going to support the motion that basically gives direction to staff that, that, I don't see a situation of borrowing money, but, but going to the fund balance to help balance the '15 budget. I think we're slightly over 15%. I, we, we've given this, we went from 20% down to slightly above 15%, and for those of you who are here watching, and the staff members, and the public, we have used that fund balance to save jobs for the last six, six-some years, when we, six to seven years when we've seen this decline, and we've done, we have done everything possible to, to supplement that, hoping for a turnaround in, in our SEV values and economy, which is slowly starting to occur. So, I would support not using any more fund balance and that we, we look to the amount of, of approximately 700,000 in our budget to reduce for the '15 budget. So, I will support your motion, and then after this, if the chair, I mean, I have another motion if you would call on me, so.
Other discussion? I can't support this motion. I, I think it's short-sighted. I think it's going to be detrimental to our people and our community and to our, our employees. You know, we went through the budget process last year, and we could not find any place to cut. Now you're telling administrator, "Go ahead and now cut it," and I, I don't think that's right. I think we're heading down the wrong road. So, Chris?
Our healthcare costs, if they increase 10% a year, will double in seven years. They are, right now, $4,834,340, and the only reason they're that low is because employees are absorbing some of this, the impact of the healthcare costs. Our, I looked at the last MERS report, our unfunded pension liability has been skyrocketing. We did go from 49% to 48% funded. I know it's almost 49% funded, but it's not. It's 48 point something. We're losing ground. We're losing ground in percentage, and we're losing ground in absolute value. Our unfunded pension liability is $44 million in the last MERS report. We have got to address that. We have, I mean, Herb, we have been overspending for years, and we can't continue. When 80% of your spending is payroll, you cannot continue down that road. You've got to look at the services you provide, and you have to look at outsourcing, and you have to, I mean, and obviously, you have to look at revenue. Your suggestion regarding the medical examiner fee, yeah, that's revenue. Our, the costs of our medical examiner have skyrocketed. It has to be a combination, which is basically common sense. It's what we do in our everyday lives. What we've been doing on this board and budgeting has not worked, so I am going to support this motion.
Dan?
I, I see this as a scaffolding, a general umbrella under which we're going to build this budget. Basically, it says, "Don't spend more than you make, don't borrow any money," and we've depleted our fund balance as far as we should. It, I haven't, I don't think the motion even said anything about cuts, the new amended motion. Now, cuts are going to happen, but this motion doesn't say it. So, I don't see why any board member wouldn't, wouldn't agree with, "Don't spend more than you make, don't borrow money, and don't deplete your fund balance." That's a real simple thing. I think that's the scaffolding I'm trying to get, and then that's the umbrella under which we do the work we have to do today. I think it's a great starting point. I'm encouraging you to vote for it.
Dave, did you have a comment?
I've got a few comments. One is, I've heard what we shouldn't do, but I haven't heard what we should do. I've given you a lot of options on what you should do. Revenue increases. In fact, I hustled a, the funding for 911 in here, and it was approved by the voters. It was approved for operating costs and capital costs. We have enough money in, in the surcharge that was approved by the voters to do that, to alleviate your general fund of $686,000 plus some indirect cost, which is a significant amount of money, which is over $700,000. It fixes that problem, which is what we intended to do in the first place, at least some of us. That's what I intend when I put it on the, you know, in front of the commissioners to get on the ballot. And nobody seems to want to cut. The only thing that really is available for us to cut, which is the police department. Our law enforcement personnel on the road is the only place where we have the kind of money to cut that. I can't cut debt service for the buildings. I can't cut the treasurer's office. I mean, there's a lot of places that, if you look at it, they are like down to the bone already. In fact, everywhere that's down to the bone has already been picked clean. You can't go and get more money out of those places. You've also taken serious steps to reduce your personnel costs. Now, the Commissioner Max Bauer pointed out, we're spending $4.8 million, which if we hadn't, if this board had not negotiated with the first groups and is now negotiating with the rest of the groups to get a higher deductible and a change in the plan design, that number would be over $6 million this year. So, you have taken steps to do that. We've also reduced a number of other benefits to our employees. Employees have paid for, you know, to get the numbers down. They still keep going up. Because of the, the health insurance increases, which are killing us, we're still not in balance. We should have been in balance, but, you know, there's 17% increase in health insurance and 225,000 in, in retirement. It's just too much to take. So, the voters gave us this millage, or this surcharge for 911. Some people don't want to use that. They want to levy less, or they want to give us, give 911 more money than it needs. I'm not sure what they want, but to me, it helps you through this problem. The voters were kind enough to approve this, and they want good funding for 911, and they want it to be, them to have good equipment, and they want to have staff that can handle the calls. So, you can do a number of other things. Right now, we're subsidizing townships probably more than $1 million a year for police officers that we, we employ. We give them cars, we give them, you know, the markings, we give them the guns, we give them the uniforms, we give them, we deal with their liability, we deal with everything else, and they pay about 50% of the cost. And that's just not right. The city doesn't get the benefit of those officers, and the city employs its own police force. It's really inappropriate for us to be subsidizing one township or several townships, not the other townships, with general fund dollars. So, I've offered that as a possible way of changing this, instead of, and it doesn't mean you have to reduce road patrol. What it, what it means is, we should be charging them what it costs, and they should pay for what they're getting, not pay half for what they're getting. If it's $75,000 that they're paying per year, and it costs 150,000 to completely outfit that officer and get him on the road, then maybe they need to pay, maybe they need to get 50% of that officer's time, not 100%. So, that's an option. There are several options, and we're not going to borrow money. I get that. You don't, you want to pay for the pension, the defined benefit obligation out of the general fund? Fine. To me, that's managing your money. If you have a house payment, and you can't make your house payment because you've got a 15-year mortgage and your bills are too high, and you want to finance it over 20 years, and that will get you to, so that your bills, you can meet your bills, you refinance your loan for 20 years, and you stretch, you get an extra five years. In our case, we get arbitrage on the money, which is, you know, artificially low interest rates that are being held down by the Fed, and, you know, what we earn in the market is what we get, and the difference is, also goes to offset that debt. So, you don't want to do that? That's okay. But there are options to just deciding to indiscriminately, or at least discriminately, find more places to cut, except the places that you don't, you didn't, never cut before. Right now, you want to cut all the places that you've already cut to death, and that's not a good way to do this. And I've given you an option, several options, actually, that allow you to manage these, this deficit and fix it without causing pain. But if the objective, the holy grail of this board, is to cut the budget, then by all means, cut it. But tell me where.
Larry?
Well, just two points. First of all, County Minister at 101, I understand your viewpoint, but what you've got to understand is that we came together many years ago, when I first got on the board, and we came up with an agreement with all the townships, with these community policing officers, which are now called supplemental police officers, and it was a great deal. I mean, they, they shared in the expense, we shared in the expense. It was a great partnership. And what it did for us is, for the townships that wanted extra support in, in police activity, we paid half, they paid half, and guess what? We grew 10,000 people in the last 10 years. Guess who benefited? We did. Because we would have had to add those officers, and they're paying half, half the cost. So, to come back and renege on an agreement that the board commissioners put in place many years ago to increase police activity for public safety and protection are, is, would, ethically is not right. And it's a great partnership. It's a model, not only for the state but for the country, and we should be fortunate the townships are willing to help us pay, or the community is benefiting from the partnership of us sharing in the cost of these officers, especially when we have a growth situation in population. The biggest thing I struggle with in this budget is, you know, my first inclination is that the initial money coming from the 911 surcharge, which would be assessed in June, should go immediately for technology and upgrades into our communication system so officers and ambulance and fire can talk and... so officers and ambulance and fire can talk and respond properly and not have challenges and difficulty in communications. And that's kind of the protocol of why, the rationale behind the first six or seven-hundred thousand coming from the surcharge, and that's a half a year surcharge in June, should be applied to that. Now, if you're going to give me, if the board is going to put me in a position of laying off police officers and downsizing the sheriff's department, corrections department and all police officers and school liaison officers and, and that whole structure vis-a-vis a six-month leeway on that surcharge to support operations in nine-one-one, I'm going to have a real difficult, challenging decision to make. And I guess, at this point, if that's, if that's the only alternative that I have as a board member, I'm not going to enjoy the vote of, of reducing those officers. So that would be the only way I would agree to using that money to supplement operations for nine-one-one, to keep those officers in place for a six-month period. And then, when the new, and then when the new one comes in at a full year, then we make all those massive improvements to nine-one-one. But that would be the only scenario that I could even attempt to think about in terms of using that money. And that is to save officers, so.
So I have Dan, then Chris, and then Dave, and then Charlie.
I want to, I want to bring us, I want to bring us back to the motion. David, the things you just said, that you have ideas on how to cut the budget. I respect those ideas. I don't think my motion, maybe with the exception of borrowing money,
Right.
excludes any of those things. And you guys are discussing a whole bunch of things that we can discuss later.
Let's get with the motion.
But let's just stick with this motion. It means we don't spend more than we make, we don't borrow any money, and we don't freely use our fund balance. That's it. When we actually pass that, all these other things we can do under the umbrella of the motion.
All right, I call a question.
All right, that's what I'm asking for.
Yep, call a question.
Motion to call a question. We need a roll call vote to call a question.
What does that mean?
That means we have a vote.
We're voting.
We have a vote on this motion.
We're all done talking on this motion.
Yeah.
Let's do it.
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Rennie?
No.
Inman?
Yes.
Lem Kool?
No. Motion carries to call the question. Now, onto the budget discussion with the motion that's been on the floor. So we continue that. It'll be Chris.
Dave, I hear your frustration.
We have to vote.
The motion on.
You have to vote.
When you, when you.
The vote on Commissioner Lathrop's motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
To call the question.
I'm sorry.
The question is the motion that he.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The question was the motion. The question is voting on his motion.
I apologize, I.
Now, we're going to vote on the motion.
Okay, all right. So now, we have a vote on the motion then.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we have a roll call, please.
Okay.
Max Bauer?
Yes.
Rennie?
No.
Inman?
Yes.
Lathrop?
Yes.
Lem Kool?
No. Motion carries. So where would you like to go from here? The chairs?
A couple of places. Again, I would like to look at outsourcing opportunities. It's not something employees want to hear, but we have to look at it. And it's our responsibility as elected officials to look at it on a regular basis for the taxpayers and give them the best value we can for their tax dollars. And we should do it regularly. And I know it's unpleasant. It's done regularly in private business. It needs to be done regularly in government as well. Another point I would like, and again, I want to take another look at what we're paying for MSU extension. Again, before I fund somebody who teaches nutrition classes, I want, and I have no idea what the return on investment is on that. But before I fund that, I'm going to put a deputy out on the road. And Dave, I heard your frustration, but we're already down deputies. We are, we have in effect implemented your plan without intention. We're down about seven deputies right now, maybe eight. I'm not exactly sure of the exact number, although I believe the undersheriff could probably tell me. So those are some things that I want to look at. Another thing, and this is going to really give Commissioner Inman heart palpitations, the Council of Governments. It's a state agency. Is that money that we necessarily need to give to the Council of Governments? That's funded by the state of Michigan. Is that required? Is that dues? Is that extra money that we give to the Council of Governments? There are, I've got ideas, many of them. But again, I need answers to my questions.
I, I can answer that question for you if you'd like.
Okay. Go ahead, Larry.
Regarding the, the Council of Governments, that was an inter-local agreement between ten counties to come together some twenty, twenty-five years ago to form a board that would operate and manage and apply for regional grant, regional grants because today and back then, the only way you could get state and federal money was if it was multi-regional. So the dues between the ten counties has remained fifty thousand. Our dues have not changed, even though our population has increased. We were getting, we're getting a heck of a deal where the other populations have not. But our, the fifty thousand is used to match the money that the state and the federal government requires in order to get the money to come into Grand Travis, into the ten-county region, of which Grand Travis County gets the lion's share of the majority of the benefit. So that was the concept behind the dues is, is to have seed money available to match state and federal money so we can bring in economic development, bring in job training, and those other things that we do at the Council of Governments now. The Council of Governments just now has done an initiative with the governor and it created a, the governor's asked for all the Council of Governments and the Michigan Works areas, which we have a ten-county Michigan Works area, that the Council of Government has the, is the fiscal agent on, to come together and create one board, not two. And however, the Council of Government sort of legally stays in place because of the agreements that we have in place. But we've actually merged now those two boards together. And it's, it's, it's for the Governor's Prosperity Board to bring help and attract and bring in new employers to our area and for job training and as a safety net for employers. If they get let go or if an employer leaves, then there's a job training area where we can have a safety net for them and get them job trained, retrained and back in the work environment. So if you take a look at our ten thousand dollars that we put in, or something like that, our return is magnified by a hundred, you know, a thousand times in terms of the return to the community in terms of job retention, having them stay here, pay taxes, live here, those kinds of things. So just to give you an idea of the purpose behind the function of the, of the, of the ten-county region and why it was formed and the dividend that we're getting back from state and federal money. Without that fifty thousand dollars, we would, they would not have the availability to match some of that money, to bring that money in. So just something to think about.
Dave?
Okay, so are you really concerned about having to lay off officers or to affect public safety in some way? This surcharge analysis that I gave you today.
I need to get one, by the way, but I'll use yours.
It's in there.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah. If you look at it closely, it says the first year, we got a two-hundred-and-twenty-seven-thousand-dollar problem.
But going forward, it's all set.
And what that assumes is that we're going to finance either through a commercial loan or line of credit, probably a line of credit, because we wouldn't buy all the capital equipment all at once. We would buy it in pieces. But to get them their, all their equipment right up front, we would borrow the money, either from the county, it's other funds.
Liquor tax, financial.
Right, right. Or from a commercial lender. And that, this is at a four percent interest rate. It would cost us three-hundred-and-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety dollars based upon a million-six-hundred-and-seventeen-nine-seventy-six if we were to do it in January and, or do it in July and, and not make payments until January first of two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
And, and they can get all their equipment up front. That's the, that's the idea.
That makes sense.
And that's all within the surcharge. This was the, kind of the master plan for the financing of this nine-one-one operation. We're going to fund all of the operations, plus we're going to fund all the capital up front, take it out over the six years of the, take the term out over the six years of the surcharge and then come, actually in two thousand twenty-one, actually two thousand twenty, we would have to, you know, redo what we need and go back and get a renewal on the surcharge or go back to the eighty cents. So that's just, that, that's how you use the buck eighty-five to fully fund nine-one-one and get them everything they want on July first.
Upfront, upfront.
Yeah. And, and, you know, we're, this thirty-eight thousand, we're going to spend that this year because the law, the recorder can't wait.
I'd like to entertain a motion to set up a separate fund for nine-one-one surcharge and to adopt it at a dollar eighty-five.
It's, it's in the General Appropriations Resolution. It's really not necessary to do that. If you, once you adopt the budget, it's now in your substitute resolution on your desk. The motion's right in there.
It is?
Yep. Paragraph three.
Okay.
It's top of page two. It basically says, it recognizes that we got the, the increased surcharge from the voters and it, and it applies it so that we can move all the money out of the general fund. I know there's some people that are concerned we're going to use that money in the general fund. No, we're just going to move all the money out into a separate fund. Then their revenue and their expenses are all separate from the general fund and.
What number is that?
There won't be any mixing.
What number is that?
Number three. It's at the top of the page two. Where's that at? It's in one of these things on her desk.
All right. I didn't see that there.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that.
Yeah.
Page two at the top.
Okay, all right, okay. All right, got it.
It's a new paragraph and we just renumbered all the rest of them all the way down.
Okay.
So is there also anything in there about the cremation fee?
No, there's nothing about the cremation fee. We'd have to have that adopted. I think Wendy Trut is going to bring in something about, because we're going to need additional funding for a medical examiner and that should be a funding source for medical examiner.
Okay. Can we do that here or do we want to do that at a separate meeting?
We probably want to do it at a separate meeting.
Separate meeting, okay. Dean, I have a question for you. On the unfunded retiree benefits, do you have, and I may be asking this right off the top of your head, a dollar amount that we're paying over and above the normal amount that we would pay? And where is that dollar amount going for the next ten years? How much additional money is going to come out of our general fund every year for the next ten years?
I don't have that information in front of me, but you're talking about our defined benefit pension plan?
Yes.
We are on an accelerated funding plan with, with MERS and the payments are scheduled to increase. What that means is your, your, all of your funds where you have those costs will be bearing more of that cost. And a good majority of that additional or added cost is funded by the, the general fund because of how you appropriate to the other funds. So at, at a minimum, you're, you're talking, Commissioner Max Bauer.
Oh, cool. Well, the other thing is, is that we, I see about four or five different retirees, people that are retiring. So now, I think we were at fifty-five, now we're going to be down to fifty. So that's going to make that even heavier because we have fewer people paying into it. Long-term employees are retiring.
It, it's a number that we have to keep paying. I mean, it's, it's, it's a number that is, it went up by two-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars this year. It's probably going to go up by two-hundred-and-twenty-five plus next year. There, it's going to keep going up every year, quarter of a million dollars or so, until we get to full funding.
Right. So in other words, when we, every year from now on, you're going to have to find two-hundred-and-fifty to five-hundred thousand dollars a year additional cuts?
Or.
Additional, on top of what you're being told today.
The market is going to have to outpace what it's done. Because of the two thousand eight setback, because of the twenty-five percent drop in the market in two thousand eight, we are still climbing back out of that hole.
Mm-hmm. So.
What, no.
Yeah.
You just, no?
I just.
Dave, we have not been fully funded since approximately nineteen ninety-one.
I'm.
Right.
That's a completely different thing. Why are you shaking your head no at me?
Well.
What I'm saying is, is the twenty-five percent drop.
I know.
The market value of the assets and the actuarial value assets are out of whack by about six percent this year. They were fourteen percent the year before because it was a good market year. Well, if it actually goes above that or gets even, we're going to see some relief from that. But, you know, it's, it's just a guessing game. It's, you know, we know it's going to go up until it's paid off or it's fully funded.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Charlie?
Yeah, getting back to Larry's comment on the CPO thing. I don't think the county should be subsidizing people that can afford the CPOs. I think we should look at this realistically, reopen these, explain rationally what's going on here. This is a huge amount of money we spend every year on these folks. I've figured it between five-hundred and a million dollars a year of subsidies.
Mm-hmm.
There's no reason for that. I think people are reasonable. We should bring these people together and we could make a huge change in our budget if we did something with the CPO, a cremation fee, and did something with staffing plan, a couple positions maybe, not seven or eight, a couple. I think that would change the whole balance sheet. And I think we should be looking at that. Our revenues are stable. We have some people here from Equalization in the Treasure. Can they tell us where it's going as far as these revenues going forward? We're going to have to face this going forward. It's not a one-year deal we're doing right now.
Right.
We are looking forward from where we are today. And it's not going back to two thousand and seven and so forth. This is a different time. Even though we had success at the national election with respect to a, probably a more active, pro-growth economy coming forward, that's still two years plus away. We're going to have a couple more years of tough times, in my opinion, and then beyond, depending on what, what happens from there in the world. But I think we should look at increasing some revenues now as well as a staffing plan change and we could balance this thing out.
Okay. Dave, did you set up, did you have time to do a projection for five years?
No, I did not.
I didn't think you would. That's all right.
I was a little busy all weekend. Tried to get to it. We do have the numbers rolled in now. We've gotten the spreadsheet back on Friday from Chris Swanson, who takes our numbers and does some magic with it and puts it into that five-year or thirty-year projection if we want. But I have not had time to manipulate the data. But I can get that within the next week or so. I'm, I'm just needing some time to do it. Just couldn't get it this weekend.
And I understand. Yeah, I think, you know, Chris, you were talking about going, contracting out. You know, we have on our agenda for Wednesday, contracting for snow plowing and lawn maintenance. So I think that's a good time to be discussing that at that time. I don't think we want to discuss it here on top of having it on that agenda.
No.
So I think that's important to be able to do, work in that direction. Yes, Dave?
Well, you know, one of the things that we were looking at was, there was kind of a motion to try and get rid of seven-hundred thousand dollars of our problem by, before the end of the year. Well, the surcharge passing does just that. And it, and if you put it into your budget and recognize it as revenue, assuming that it will be levied July first, then your seven-hundred thousand dollars is achieved. Actually, it's more like eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand. The, or eight-hundred-and-twenty-five with the indirect cost. Unfortunately, some of that's got to be paid out anyway. We're going to still have some money, and I don't know how it's going to all turn out, but we can rebalance this budget with, you know, that seven-hundred thousand dollars reduced. And then going forward, you can meet with Danny on Wednesday. You can talk to Wendy about the medical examiner. You can start working on all, any of the things that you mentioned, the COG, the MSU extension meetings. And we can do this as we go forward. You've got these questions. If you want to continue your budget discussion, continue making these changes, you can adopt your budget and amend it as soon as you feel like you've got enough information to make the amendment. And it's not that tough. So I think we're, I mean, we've made a, a great stride toward getting this deficit under control. I don't know what's going to happen next year. I don't know if we're going to have a three percent increase in health insurance or a thirty percent. I don't know if we're going to have a 3% increase in health insurance or a 30% increase. But it's the way it's always been. It's never been any different than that. We don't know if this, the state legislature is going to continue funding revenue sharing fully. If history tells us anything, it was a one-time thing, and it's going to go backwards. Except Larry's going to help us, he's going to make sure it doesn't happen.
Dan?
A couple of questions, David. The fiber projections, is that, that five-by-five thing they asked for?
Yes, yes.
Oh, cool. And I want to understand what you want to do with the 911 levy.
I want to move it all into a separate fund
Okay.
And finance the, the capital items
All one year.
So that they can buy all their capital equipment right up front. As soon as they, as soon as July 1 comes around, they can go and buy it all. And then we'll have them pay it back in the subsequent years.
Okay. Do you mind if I ask, Larry, I mean, I don't know how to do this quite right.
Keep going, you've got the table.
Okay. Larry, you were concerned, and so are some of our citizens, and maybe we could hear from them, that we don't use this money to balance the budget, we use this money to buy new equipment. Does the way Dave explained this outweigh your concerns?
It always, yeah. He, he had, this is a huge mitigating factor that I had not thought of, which is brilliant. And that is, we can take what the voters approved and allocate it towards operations, and we can immediately go out and bond the amount we need. We can go out for specs, the exact equipment we need, the communication equipment we need, get the dollar amount and immediately go out and either get a loan or bond it and get it done immediately, so we don't have to wait until the following year when the millage is assessed again. We can do it up front, bond it, get a loan, and have the, the amount of the millage pay for the debt service as we go forward for the life of the equipment. I mean, to me, that makes, that offsets my concern about the differential coming in for the first six months.
Okay. I know I'm kind of dense, I'm sorry. Are you saying then, this millage is going to go on for what, how many years?
Six.
Six years.
It's a, it's a surcharge, and it's going to go on for six years.
Okay, okay.
It's not a millage.
Okay, all right, it's not a millage, just search, I'm sorry.
That can be readjusted on a yearly basis.
Okay, so
Two-one.
All right. So we're going to buy new equipment with this. Are you also saying that we can pay the 911 staff charges through this same, this money can do both?
Yep. That's what this analysis shows.
Now, I know we have some citizens that are, have been real concerned about that, that we handled this money right. So will there be a time, I know that, that, we have citizen comments sometimes right during the time we're discussing this, these kinds of things. Am I making sense? We have, we have public comments sometimes, then we bring up a, a subject. Might, it might now be a good time to have the public weigh in on this, is, if this idea of David's is amenable to our public.
I have to say one thing first, please.
I can.
I mean, I'm not, you're the boss.
I know. Chris?
I had a lot of voters contact me about this 911 surcharge. And I committed to them that this money would be used for equipment, not operations. It's what I, and it is why I voted for it against the resolution initially. If nothing else, I'm consistent, and I am going to keep my word. I will support the 91, and I supported the 911 surcharge. I supported that vote, primarily because I know we need that equipment. I know we do. We cannot have dead zones in this county when someone is in trouble trying to call 911. We just, it, it just can't, that, it's too important. And I know our equipment's old. But I made a commitment to voters, saying that I would not use that surcharge money, or this surcharge money, to subsidize, plug a hole in the budget. I gave them my word that I would use it for capital, and if we, and even if we collect a dollar eighty-five, the top of the heap, I would want, this is my view, I'm only one of seven, I would want to keep that dollar eighty-five in a fund for future capital purchases because
What are you saying?
Technology is changing constantly. If I heard nothing from Jamal, I heard that, over and over and over. It's changing faster than she's receiving money. And this surcharge, if it's held for capital, will solve that problem. We don't have to spend it all at once. So I want to be absolutely clear. I will support any motion to purchase capital equipment with the surcharge, but I will not support any motion that takes that money and uses it for 911 operations. That was my commitment.
Dave, Charlie?
Dave, how long is this capital improvement program going to take?
What do you mean?
For this 1.6 million dollars?
Well, it depends. If, if you buy it a little at a time, the 750, to accumulate the 750,000, it's going to take years, a few of the years at least. But if you buy it now and finance it over the six years of the surcharge, you can get it all in July, or shortly thereafter.
When would it be implemented?
When would the
Equipment, yeah.
Almost immediately.
It's instantaneous, huh?
Well, I mean, as fast as they can get it in, and get all the, you know, you've got to change out consoles, you've got to, you know, get the software uploaded and debug it and get it all integrated with your systems, you know, yeah, but
Months?
Yeah.
You can be six months.
Before the end of the year, I would imagine.
Okay, a couple of months.
I bet you couldn't do this for, for six months by getting all the equipment, because first of all, you have to identify, you've got central dispatch board that has to decide which, which equipment they want, how they want to handle it. So you've got to go through that. You're also going to have to then go out to the, to bid for the stuff, so that takes 30 to 60 days. You also have to then be able to order the equipment, and they got to probably special make it. So you're probably six months before you're going to get all the equipment installed.
They're going to have to get started right away.
If you don't start right away, you're going to have
Getting the bids, specs together and all that.
You got to, you got to start today in order to get them on the process to build and do that.
So, so when do we need money to get this going?
So that's when you'd have to borrow the money in order to pay for it up front.
You pay for it up front?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. I've been asked to ask whether or not there's anybody in the public that would like to make comment on the 911 surcharge. I will open it up to the public for any comments. I don't see any. Could I get a motion to adopt the 2015 general appropriation resolution as presented?
So moved.
I have a motion, do I have support? I will support it. Are there discussions?
I don't understand the motion.
Are you, are you To adopt this.
And the budget.
The whole budget.
And adopt the budget.
I'm not doing it, no.
So.
No way. We haven't, we haven't cut a dime yet.
I haven't done nothing.
We haven't done anything. We haven't cut a dime yet. And for us to just do this, I'm not going to say the word, it's, it's X-rated.
Larry?
We're here to cut some, cut some money out of this budget and just say, oh, we got 911 now, it's all okay, and we'll, and we fluff it off for the future. That's what this board did last year. We need to cut some, some stuff out of this board. We need to make some cuts.
Larry?
Well, I, I agree with Dr. Lathrop on that. I mean, I, it was just a sake for, for discussion that I seconded it, but I, I don't know if we're, we're under any guidelines or pressure to adopt what you've put together.
Not till the end of the year.
Not till the end of the year, so I, I can either withdraw my second or just vote no on it, whatever you want, but
You might have the votes in the back.
Personally, I'd rather go through the whole process and vote on it at the end of the year, as Dr. Lathrop has indicated, so we identify what cuts we're going to make as lo, as well as deciding this 911 thing. But just one remark on the 911 thing. To me, the main concern of the public was the delay in, if we took that amount and it was used supplementally for operations, the concern was the delay in not upgrading our equipment. With date, with this suggestion of, of going out now and bidding it out and up-fronting the cost by bonding or a loan and implementing it immediately and getting those new equipment in immediately, to me, offsets the concern of the public on the use of those funds. Because you're just, you're just flipping dollars from one year to the other.
Well, until this is adopted, the 911 surcharge doesn't go forward.
I understand it.
Okay.
I mean
So I'm just
I mean, you could do a separate motion.
If you wanted to do a separate motion, you could.
You could do a separate motion on the 911 issue and get that in front of us, and then deal with the general appropriations deal.
So, I don't care.
Well, I'm just wondering, I'm hoping I understand this right. David wants to go out and borrow the money, buy all the stuff right, brand-new right now, and use that money to pay off that debt. So the money really will be used for equipment?
Right, absolutely.
Okay.
Okay.
So why, so would that make you happy?
Yeah, as long as, I, I'm fine, as long as the money is going to be used
For equipment.
For equipment, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, but it's also going to be used for our operating costs that currently require a general fund appropriation of 686,000. Our neighbors to the north, they'll spend anything out of their general fund for 911 because it's fully funded. 70% of the counties in the state, fully funded by their surcharge or by the millage. We weren't. And so, we just kept paying it, kept paying it. Now, all of our nondiscretionary dollars that have not already been cut, all the places you can look to cut, the biggest places are the courts and public safety. Public safety, 911 is public safety. So we've got a new revenue source for public safety. It allows us to keep police officers on the road without having to cut police officers. This is a solution that is a new revenue. We went through the budget for about three months last year, and we had a parade of every department head in front of us, and we couldn't find anybody. Even MSU Extension came before you and explained what the return on investment was for the dollars you were putting in. Nobody cut MSU Extension because some of that money, like the nutrition program, is grant-funded, and some of it is part of a deal we have with MSU Extension and 4H and, you know, you look at it and you go, wow, they, they actually, for a pretty reasonable price, provide a pretty good service to our public. That's the, but you can go through that again, and you can call up, any, anytime you want, you can call up a department and say, we would like to look at this. We would like to look at Danny's mowing and snow moving operation, and we want to see what the bids look like, and we want to see this and that, and make some decisions about that. You can do that anytime. For this budget, you know, your objective was to get 700,000. There's a new revenue of 700,000. That helps you a lot. And I suggest you take it.
So can I withdraw my motion, or second? Hey, can I ask administrator for a recommended motion regarding the 911 surcharge?
Well, it's in the, it's in the resolution. If you read that
Top of the page.
That paragraph.
So that paragraph right there, you want as a separate motion?
Nope.
The first paragraph.
I want you to adopt the whole thing with that.
Yeah.
Well, we don't, we don't want to do
It includes 911
No, you're not
Being levied.
No, we want to decide the 911 thing now, and we're going to address the bud, rest of the budget at the, by December. So, if we're going to do that, what is the motion on the floor for the 911?
I would use that.
That first paragraph?
Mm-hmm.
All right. I would move. Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
All right, I would move. In accordance with the authorization approved by the electorate on November 4, 2014, the surcharge of landline, wireless, and voice-over-internet protocol services used as located in Grand Terre Haute County shall be assessed a dollar eighty-five per month beginning July 1, 2015, through June 3, 2016, for the purpose of financing facilities, equipment, maintenance, and operating costs of the Grand Terre Haute 911 public safety call answering and dispatch service. Administrator Control is hereby directed to create a 911 dispatch fund to record all revenues and capital and operating expenses related to the 911 Central Dispatch Department. Then I need to add that it is an intent of the Board of Commissioners to identify the total cost of the equipment needed and proceed with a, a loan, a six-year loan to be paid by the surcharge.
I have a motion, do I have support? I'll support it for discussion.
Oh, yeah.
Chris?
The motion reads, "and operating costs," and I
Can't do it.
Can't do it. I may, I gave my word. I, you know
The board, the board did that.
I know. They, the board outvoted me. They do it all the time. I'm, I'm, it's not like that's, you know, a path I haven't been down before.
It was the issue of the first, it was the issue of the first allocation. It was totally intended by the Board of Commissioners to fund the 911 surcharge to supplement the operations and the equipment and pay for them all together. That's how we established the
It was. It was. But I voted no, and I'm going to vote no again.
All right.
Other discussion, Charlie?
I would not support the motion. I don't think we've brought enough on the budget. I think Commissioner Lathrop's absolutely right. We shouldn't be passing anything until we take a look at this, because as soon as we pass it, we're not going to get anything done. We did that last year, and we could find nothing at the department level. We have to look at an overall plan, a strategic plan, if you will, to increase our revenues, and we can do that within this budget if we want to take the time to discuss it and make the motions to do it. This piecemeal effort right now is not going to solve anything, in my opinion.
Larry?
Well, here's the purpose of the motion today, is so we don't, since it did pass, let's not delay our facility, or whoever's, the administration and Jamal and the Central Dispatch from doing the actual analysis, going out for bid, identifying the equipment they need, and coming back to us for the final approval to fund it, loan it, and use the 911 surcharge to pay for it over the next six years. Why do we want to delay this, this action through December? Let's get them working on it now. And that's the whole purpose behind the motion. Totally, 100% purpose behind this motion.
Dan, you had your hand up?
Yeah. I'm hearing two things. I, I'm hearing that we're going to buy, use this money for equipment, and we're also going to use it to run the 911 department. I would be in favor of this motion if it's used for equipment. We, we borrow the money up front, we get the equipment in there, but for us to say, ah, we're done now, we've got the 700,000 from 911, and we can just like coast our way through on this budget, I'm not going to vote for that. You've got to take out operating costs. If, if you amended that motion that's used on equipment only, I don't, the next board could maybe change it, I don't know, but this board is saying that we're using it on equipment only, and we're not using it for operating, we're not using it to balance our budget. So.
I just.
So, that, that's my concern with the motion. I agree with almost everything except operating costs that are in there.
I just want to remind you that the voters approved to use it for operating costs.
Yeah.
So, Charlie, you had your hand up.
As far as, why can't we have these people go out, do their analysis? She already did an analysis. We saw a big list of stuff they need and all that. Why can't we start the bidding process and stuff without saying we're going to go out and borrow money and so forth? We don't know we have to borrow this money to finance this. First of all, we're assuming that we're going to get $1.85 per month, per unit, or for, per device, as of July 1st. We don't know that. We have no clue of that, actually, right now. We know we're going to get a half-year over the 80 cents until July comes around, which is about $400,000. But I don't think we need to go that far with this motion. We can initiate this process without making that motion, in my opinion, unless I'm wrong, you can tell me.
Dan?
I, I'm sensing, and all due respect to everybody, that someone's trying to do an end run around us actually grappling with things and cutting them. We need to do that. And by adopting this, and poof, we're done now, they can all go home, it's all so easy now. I'm not for that. So, and, and this motion, and I have the greatest respect for Commissioner Inman, I can't support it because that's what this motion will do. It'll just, all of a sudden, we're done, we don't, we're not going to cut a thing. Or, or we'll promise we will, well, a check is in the mail. I'm not going to support the motion.
Okay, I, I will. I just wanted to make comment that this only does one small section. This would do what you're saying.
Oh, no.
If you adopted this, it would stop any cuts. You're right.
All right.
Okay, this does not stop any cuts.
Correct.
So, all I'm saying is that when you adopt this whole package, you would stop any cuts.
Right.
So as long as you only adopt one small section, you still have, you're still telling the administration and me to be able to continue going forward, to look at and start looking at all the other opportunities to cut. That's all I'm saying.
I want to make some cuts. I want to make some cuts, huh?
Okay. So, Charlie?
It also says we will fund this by a bond or commercial loan.
Yeah.
It's too early to do that.
Oh.
If it's going to take six months to get this together, you could have $1.85 coming in then, and you could have some money to throw around that way.
The voters want it done.
I think we could do it now. Just do it.
Larry?
Um, I'll amend my motion that the operational costs will be evaluated by the board by the end of the year, and the rest of the motion will remain in effect. Does the second agree?
No.
Okay. Do I have another, can we get another second?
I don't understand it.
Well, I just did what you asked me to do.
No.
Is withdraw, is amend my motion to take out operation costs. We could decide that, we can decide that by the end of the year.
And then, then all of it would go toward?
No, we're just, we're just making a motion that, that, just like you just said, I'm taking, I'm withdrawing the operational cost out of the motion, and we're moving forward with having staff use the 185 for technology increases and upgrades, having 911 move forward with, doing the assessment, and then having, and then bring it back for us to make the decision to go out for, whether, to approve the acquisition and the purchase. And we'll decide whether the operational cost is, is the right thing to do by the end of the year.
Chris, you had a comment?
I do. I see Dave starting to hold his head.
Poor Dave.
Commissioner Rennie, mark your calendar, I think you're exactly right. I think we can move forward without this motion.
Then we need to give direction, then.
Well, I, and I want, I'm more than happy to give direction. I would love to have a, a proposal, and quite honestly, I would be surprised if Jamal had not started working on it Tuesday night, election night, after the returns came in and she saw she was going to get a surcharge. My guess is, after she cheered, that she was already in her mind trying to figure out exactly what equipment she wanted to purchase. I think she's probably already started. Commissioner Rennie, I think you're right, I think we can start without this motion.
Make a motion.
Well, we've got to withdraw.
We've got one on the floor.
Who originally made the motion? I did.
You withdrew it. You did.
No, I bet I made a new motion.
I wasn't seconding it, and I wouldn't have seconded it.
I made a new motion, so I'll withdraw my motion. All right, now we need direction, please, instead of, you know.
I'd like to see a proposal.
Make a motion.
You know.
Make a motion.
We can bring it back to ways and means. Is that all right with everybody?
It's fine.
Okay.
I would like to see a proposal for equipment, that's it.
Yeah.
Give it, give it, bring it on.
Okay.
So.
I make a motion that we no longer fund community collaborative.
Support.
You know, I think that the problem is, is that when you start making motions like that, you're not giving them any time to come before you.
Right.
They've been before us. We had a whole, we had a whole year of them before us last year. We had a whole parade of people in front of us.
And you don't think they're doing, you don't think that money's being used wisely?
I made a motion.
That's okay. Who supports it?
I did.
Have a motion, Dave?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's entirely appropriate to target things and say, we're looking at this, and then have those specific folks come in, rather than have everybody come in and wonder whether the, whether the ax is going to fall on them or not.
I would agree.
And I think you really, you know, it's great to say we're going to cut the budget, but we did have a parade, you're right, and.
I don't want that.
We didn't identify anything that we needed, you know, we got more information for you, and we ended up cutting maybe one, no, we, we bit out.
We didn't cut crap.
Well, you're right.
Well, we didn't have the votes.
So identify something.
We just did.
You did, you just did.
Let's just start.
So I think that's an appropriate way to do it.
I did.
And we'll have the community collaborative come in at the next meeting and say why that would hurt them, or what the community would lose as a result, and you can say.
They were here last year.
That's fine.
They were here last year.
But you're going to do it without listening to those folks about what that means?
Yes, yeah.
I, I strongly recommend you don't do that.
$5,500.
$5,500 a year.
And that's the dues, so that our different departments can be part of that community collaborative. Without that dues, they cannot be part of the collaborative.
It's fine.
So, I think if you're going to do that, you ought to start looking at, let's reduce the, somebody said earlier, the dues for the COG. Let's get rid of TC Talus. Let's get rid of DHS budget. Let's get rid of all these other, if you're going to do that, make a motion to eliminate all.
I'm making a motion, this is the motion I'm making, all right?
Okay.
We have to make cuts somewhere.
And that's fine.
Okay?
I understand a motion.
Yeah, I think, I think that's the way to do it. You make motions to cut things, and then, you know, you don't do it the same day, you, you put it on the list of things that we're going to look at, and then you listen to what they've got to say, and if you're still of that mind, you cut it.
Okay.
That's a great process.
I don't get that. Why, why do we, we had all those wonderful people come up in front of us, many of them in this off, in this audience. We listened to them. Things haven't changed that much in a year, all right? And then it'd be the same speech we heard last year. We have to make cuts somewhere. What, where are we going to make a cut that isn't going to disappoint someone? We have poor things we go through. Health, safety, welfare.
This is a cut we can make without cutting an employee. Why wouldn't we?
That's true.
And, and to say, well, it's only $5,000. I know it's not the whole thing, but you've got to start somewhere. We need to start doing, I want to get the ball rolling.
Larry, you had a comment?
Well, I'll tell you what, you know, I want to be sensitive to the other side. I think we should make a list of cuts that everybody wants to strongly consider and, and give the public notice, because I'm going to tell you what, if you don't give the public notice, then we're not doing our job. And to receive public comment on any action that this board wants to take, it wasn't specifically on the agenda, I'd still weigh in on the motion, but I want, I want, if we're going to make a series of cuts, I want them listed, I want, I want a public notice on them, and people can come in and get public input, and then we can make the decision to cut, and we've got the time to do it. I don't want to just spring it on the public and just vote it right now.
Charlie?
I agree with Larry wholeheartedly. Any of these cuts that come up this way shouldn't be done piecemeal. People should have a chance to come in and voice their opinion. I could not support this, as stated myself.
I'm going to call a motion. Roll call, please.
Rennie?
No.
Inman?
No.
Lathrop?
Yep.
Max Power?
You can vote against me, I don't care.
No, I, I have a, I have a question, a legal question. If I vote with the majority, can I bring it back?
Uh-uh. No, you have, you have to be the opposite side.
Well, I'm going to say.
No, you have to be, no, you have to vote with the majority in order to bring it back, right?
I have to vote with the majority to bring it back.
Change the board's mind, yeah. That's right.
No.
Yes.
What happened?
It would hurt you guys.
Motion. Motion does not pass.
All right.
Okay. We have an executive summary of suggestions. Would you like to go through that executive summary?
Just a point of order, I mean, not, not a point of order, but, I've got a, I chair the council of governments meeting, and it's at 3:30, so, just to give you a heads-up.
I'm hoping to get through it.
I've got to get out of here by 3:00, or you could, or the four of you can decide what you want to do.
That was the thing, we have, we're short two members here. These votes are critical votes. I don't understand why we're doing this.
Because we've scheduled this as a time, do you want to reschedule this meeting?
I might, I agree with you on that, but I think on these important kind of decisions that all seven members should be here.
I agree.
I think we can make some cuts with all seven of us here.
Okay. So would you like to?
I don't think we're going to agree today.
Okay.
So let's see if we can schedule another meeting.
We can schedule another meeting if you'd like.
I don't, but what other option is there?
Well, we've got work to do, you guys. We've got a lot of work to do.
Yeah, we do.
Kelly, Bill, have a nice day.
What is today anyways? I don't remember.
10th.
Thank you.
Monday, the 10th, all day.
Next week, Monday, at 1 o'clock, same time?
The 17th?
Yep.
Oh, Dan, are you going to have to move patients again?
Uh, yeah, and.
That's not fair.
Now, I want the public to understand, my patients book out two to three months, and.
How about the 18th on Tuesday?
There are sick people, they need my help, I can't be constantly canceling them. So, however, I think this is incredibly important, but I had to cancel a whole afternoon of patients for the nth time.
How about the 18th on Tuesday?
Tuesday, I'm in Manistee.
Oh, 17th, you're in Manistee?
Evening better for you.
Evenings are fine with me.
We can do Monday night, I will skip the city commission meeting, we can go into the training room, I don't mind.
When's Sonny going to be back?
The 14th, didn't he say?
Something like that.
So is it after, he'll, he'll be back?
He'll be back.
Let's do it Friday the 14th. Okay? Yeah. Friday the 14th is fine.
No, no, he's coming, he won't be back, he's coming back the 14th.
So we should have everybody.
But we could do it Monday night, the.
Monday, what?
15th, 17th.
The, November?
Yeah.
November 17th.
Yeah, that's fine.
At what time?
Seven o'clock, so you have time to get back.
Uh, that's Monday, I, I'm out, I'm out, I'm out at 5:00 on Monday.
But county.
Oh, okay. We could do it 6:00.
Uh, what time is, wait a minute, we have a county, the Grand Terrevis County Republican Party Convention.
Convention, that's right.
How about 18th?
18th is fine, that's.
No, 18th, I'm coming back from Manistee.
No, I was going to be.
Do you do 7?
How about Thursday?
I could do 7:00.
7:00?
Yeah.
I can't do the 18th at 7:00.
Do I do it in the morning of the 19th, during the day on the 19th?
I can do Wednesday morning, anytime Wednesday.
Wednesday morning.
Wednesday morning.
Okay, Wednesday morning, what's the date?
10:00.
19th.
10:00 AM?
Fine.
The 19th of November.
Yep.
Of another budget meeting. Come ready to make some cuts, will you?
Bring your list. What day?
The 19th.
The 19th at 10:00.
Yeah, I've got, we could go through it.
Okay.
I need a motion, or do I, somebody needs to sign them.
Chairman, I'll make a motion that the board set another special budget meeting for 2015 on Wednesday, November 19th, at 10:00 AM at the commission chambers.
All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion's carried. I don't see anything else on our agenda.
Public comment.
Well, I mean, I'll get there. Then at this time, we have time for public comment again. Carol, go ahead.
Chairman Lim cool?
Yes.
Do you want me to read the rules for public comment? I didn't do it the first time.
No, that's fine. I've got people that understand it, I think, all in the audience.
Just throwing it out there.
I think I have three minutes, and I can guarantee I will not take three minutes. I'm here as Carol Stocking, citizen, not employee. I reside at 9662 Blackman Road. I have to disagree with Commissioner Inman, and I know, but I, but I go back to the history of the CPO officers, and when we hired all of those officers back in the late 90s, early 2000s, all of those funds were, all of those positions were funded by grant money, and that, things have changed since then. There's no longer any grant money funding them, and so the county absorbed all of those And so, while the commissioners made the commitment to those townships to fund those positions, things have changed, and I think that, that all the taxpayers should be looking to the commissioners to reevaluate that, because I don't think that most taxpayers know that they are funding police officers in specific townships.